Okay, six o'clock, it's time to call the orders. Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission meeting tonight. At this time, I ask you to stand, Robert will give our invitation, and John will give our pledge.
I'd ask that everybody bow with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, thankful for another blessed day. Thank you for our health and safety in our travels here. Father, we ask that you give us wisdom tonight with every agenda item that's presented to the commission. Father, may we make decisions that are beneficial to all present in the City of Mount Pleasant's residents. We ask for safe travels home tonight as we leave this place, and we ask for continued guidance and direction in our lives. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let our minutes reflect that we have enough for a forum tonight. Item number three, tonight is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the-
I have a motion. And a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number four is approval of meetings, the prior meeting, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion, we approve the meetings from September fourteenth.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is plat approval, at this time I'll turn it to Robert.
Yes, sir. Thank all the commissioners for being here tonight. The first item on the agenda that you have before you is PC ten, twelve, twenty-one, FP one. Owner Carolyn McCormick, who's present in the audience, had submitted a final plat for review concerning lot line changes and property re-subdivision regarding property located at two oh two Edgewood Street. The proposal would re-subdivide the property at two oh two Lawrence Street into two parcels. Lot one being eighteen thousand thirteen square feet, and lot two being thirty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety square feet. This lot is situated at the intersection of the merge of Lawrence Street and Edgewood. Lot, lot one has a single-family dwelling on it. Lot two has been vacant, and at one time it was all one parcel. And the applicant is proposing to re-subdivide that, creating this additional lot. The purpose behind this request, spoken with Ms. McCormick, is to join this to her lot, which is two hundred North College. That's identified in the comment page there. I gave that as the heading of the address, so. But that's the purpose behind the request before the board tonight for the final plat review. Final plat came before us, we reviewed. Based upon our review, we had some comments that we had sent back to the survey of record. You have them in your packet. Unless, unless the board feels necessary, I won't cover those. But they have been addressed by the surveyor, and they have been corrected based off our comments. So the plat meets all the standards, and it's for the board tonight for a review and approval or disapproval. I'm here for any questions, if you have any. The survey of records here, as well as the owner, and they all welcome questions from any of the board members.
As you were saying, all they're doing is dividing the lot from the existing lot down into another lot.
That's correct, yes, sir. So you'll have two individual lots there versus one-
Both of them will be conforming, right? So we're not creating a non-
That is correct. Both of them are conforming to the bulk regulations-
That's correct.
Zone. Actually exceed the bulk regulations.
Any further discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion, we approve PC one oh one, two two one, the plat approval.
Have a motion?
No signature.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Ms. Brown, Ms. Secretary, I need to get you after the meeting.
Number six, rezoning request.
Okay, Chairman, the item on the agenda is PC ten, twelve, twenty-one, R Z one. Owner Matt Brown has submitted a rezoning request for review, requesting a change of property located at two oh nine North Main Street from its current zoning, CN Neighborhood Commercial, to that of R three High Density Residential, for the purpose of utilizing said structure as a single-family residence. This comes before the board tonight as a request of the owner, who is present in the audience as well. This is a two-story structure located at two oh nine North Main. Its previous use was a small business, as Brown's photography. And it's my understanding from speaking with the owner of record currently, Mr. Brown, his wishes to make sale of this property, and he has an interest, interested party wishing to utilize it as a single-family residence. And this was brought to the board as a result of that. That being said, I did supply comments, we supplied comments in direct relation to the request that you have before you. And if you want, I'll cover those. If not, they are before the board. Except the commissions, if you want me to cover those verbatim, I can do those and discuss those with the board as well. Of course, the current zoning, like I said, is CN Neighborhood Commercial. The title in the CN Neighborhood Commercial identifies such zone for commercial institutions and uses which primarily serve the local community, in which, as the business that existed there primarily served the local community as well as outline customers. So it fits the context of that zoning district. The proposed zoning request is that of R three High Density Residential. And in the title on our zoning ordinance, it states the R three district seeks to create a district that includes many type of residential dwellings that are organized in a cohesive manner. The district uses built-two lines instead of traditional yards to establish unified appearance from the public streets. The R three district should be located adjacent to downtown commercial activity to energize local businesses and sidewalks are very important. So I covered both of the titles in the zoning ordinance for y'all. The current use fits for Neighborhood Commercial, and R three fits in context with located to downtown commercial activity, as far as a residential site. So it fits in both. The property is on, let's see, on, well, I'll just go on my staff comments instead of trying to recollect it. Historically, subject property has been utilized as a business. The current use is allowed, however, the lot does not conform to the bulk standards for the zone which is situated. So even in CN Neighborhood Commercial, it's not a conforming lot. Located on North Main Street, South intersection of Park Avenue and North Main Street, the lot is situated to the south of a CN Neighborhood Commercial Zone property, currently being used as a residence under a non-conforming sta- status. Adjacent property to the south of subject property is a CN Neighborhood Commercial Zone property currently used as a business office, which is CPA office that's on Main Street. And property located directly behind subject property is Zone CDT Downtown Commercial, in which structures are predominantly residential at this time, they carry a non-conforming status as well. So that is in context where the property is situated. It's probably, it's located on a primary transportation route adjacent to residential neighborhoods as required in the zone in which it's situated. Proposed zoning amendment request to R three would correlate as well with the intent of the district for R three of being located adjacent to downtown commercial activity. I just ask that the commission consider the following findings of fact, which you have in front of you on the orange sheet, but they were included in your comments as well, that the amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area. There will be no adverse effect upon adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by overwhelming public good or welfare. No property owner or small group of, or a small group of property owners will benefit materially from the change to the detriment of the general public, and conditions affecting the area are changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's land use plan and subsequently the zoning amount. So that's the agenda item that's presented to the board tonight. The owner of said property applicant as well is here. He welcomes any questions. And I believe even the proposed purchaser, I guess for lack of word-
Buyer.
Buyers.
Can you, Director, we kind of talked about earlier, why-
Yeah, because I have that, my question. So when an applicant comes in to me, the first thing I do on a rezoning request is I look at the outlined properties and determine exactly in context where it's at, with our land use plan, our zoning, so on and so forth. I typically give the explanation to the applicant that, you know, because some people, a layperson is not going to know that you have R one, R two, and R three. Same thing can be said about, they're not going to know that you have four different commercial zones. So I instruct them that, don't instruct them, I let them know that they have the, if they're applying for a rezon, then they have the option of three different residential zones. If you're going from commercial to a residential, you have the option of three different areas to look at. So R one, I give them bulk regulations, which is, as everybody knows, sitting on the board is eighteen thousand square feet. It's situated mainly on the outlying areas of our municipality simply because they have larger lots. And it allows for only single-family dwelling. R two allows for not only single-family, but duplex cities. R three allows for multi-town homes, single-family, duplex, the wide array of residential structures. The, I also explain the bulk regulations to the applicant typically. So if you have a lot that don't meet the bulk standards for an R one designation, I'm not going to advise them to apply for an R one zone change.
Because it's a non-conforming-
It's a non-conforming lot, it would be non-conforming. So I'm advising them to ask for a rezon, and in essence, the planning commission would either approve or disapprove. If approved, then we've approved a non-conforming lot. I give them an explanation of what the bulk standards are in each zone. They have the right to make the application. And in this case, after hearing the details on all the zones, Mr. Brown chose to go with R three. Being that the lot is smaller in size, it actually fits the bulk standards of that particular zone. Because as you all know, when we went through our zoning ordinance, those bulk standards, you go from R one to R three, those bulk standards, especially lot size, reduces. You go from eighteen thousand in R one all the way down to five thousand for single-family dwelling in R three. So there's a, there's quite a bit of difference in the bulk standards within each zone as well. But that's, that's the explanation as to why the R three is being requested versus the R one. If R one was requested, it, it would be non-conforming if it, if approved. And R three, you know, if approved, it fits the bulk standards, it is by the bulk standards. But it does allow for-
Allow for a lot of other things.
A lot of other things, it most certainly does.
So you could turn the house down and build three more houses there. Once we resolve it.
If, if possible. Change it, all those things.
Yeah, if possible, if you could, you know, they could, you know, a new owner could come in and purchase the property and remove the structure. Of course, now that we have the historic designation, they have to go through that as well. So demolition, I guess to not necessarily maybe ease your concern there that the historic commission, as an historic commission, and as the administrator of that historic commission, demolition is looks down on, and it's not, it's just not something that is easily applied to structures that's located in, in the historic zone. So, but we do have a board in place for anything, even after whatever this decision from this board is. If, if there's any work done on that structure, it has to go not only possibly to this board, depending on, you know, what type of work, but it also now has to go to the historic commission for a distributive appropriateness before it can ever reach the level of the design review committee, as well as the planning commission, which y'all are situated. So there's a lot of, we've actually established another board in place that also has regulatory authority as well to anything that specifically applies to the particular area.
I have a question about that. So when the Historic Zoning Commission, we have the historic zone, which is just the commercial downtown district, right?
It extends.
But it won't, we don't have authority over residential.
From my understanding, and I might be completely off base, if you, if they are contained in the historic district, then those regulations, whether commercial or residential, apply to any exterior, any exterior modification.
Okay.
So me and John, we're probably in it, aren't we? Not on Pleasant, no ma'am, it extends to-
It is primarily commercial, and then we're-
It's primarily-
Going into the residential.
But you do have residential. You know, right now, our guidelines don't, don't necessarily speak specifically to commercial. However, there's a lot of commercial wording in there. But from my understanding of historic, and I might be completely off base here, if it's situated in the historic zone, in the historic district, then the exterior modification falls to a COA.
I'm not sure if that's right or not, I'd have to look at it. I'm not sure that we, if, whether or not we have authority over residential in that area. But like you said, possible we do if it's in that zone, but that's-
But it's still commercial right now.
Right now.
Right now.
It falls under it right now.
But we're talking about the idea of rezoning it to residential, and then going through the HCC, I'm not sure if that's right. But I'll look at it, if that's something y'all want us to.
But then we just deny rezoning a house next door to it-
Two doors.
Two doors down to residential. Yeah, that wouldn't be right.
I think we need to look at the area as a whole. I'm going to be very resistant to rezon anything in that district until we look at some type of mixed use where it's the same for all of them.
It would have to be in fairness to everyone.
Yeah.
It would have to be.
And because of being a historical district, that's why we deny beckoning them not to make it like this, so. I mean, if we did that, then we-
I don't see this house being any different than the last one that was brought before. But I do think we need to look at the whole area down there for, for mixed use where it could go either way without having to come from the board. I'm not opposed to it being residential at all, but I think we need to make sure we do the same for everybody in there.
I, I agree. I do agree with Mr. Hunter in respect to that. But we have a CDT designation that allows for upper-story residential already. The only reason this is not included is because it don't follow that CDT zone, as well as the previous designation. So in essence, our zoning ordinance allows for upstairs residential. And in today's world, which we're seeing mostly as Airbnbs, not a single-family residence. That could possibly change, but everything that's been presented to me is for the use of Airbnbs. And I know they're popular, and I know they maybe add a lot to a local business area. But in my mind, and this is my personal opinion, they don't add as much to substantiate a bunch of Airbnbs being the only use, and as a result of mixed use, that's typically what you, yeah, we are looking into that, though, for sure.
You're looking at making a change where it be consistent, and-
Yeah.
To all of these that are in between, because one could be a coffee shop, and like, if you live next door.
Yeah, you can't jump around on it and stuff like-
Yeah, and, and I mean, even if we rezon it for an Airbnb, then if they sell it, it's already rezoned, and we can't reverse it.
That's the problem, once you change the zoning, it's done.
Exactly.
Not great, not great, no matter who owns it, you're correct. And that's what, you know, this board is, this board has a lot of responsibility when it comes to that because there are so many allowed uses in a particular zone versus another zone that you have to be aware of during reviews. But like I said, I supplied comments that best fit the zoning request, and I do know that the-
I got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it up if anyone wants to speak on it, on this matter before we-
Sorry, I didn't know if you had to.
Yeah, anyone want to speak on this matter before we render a decision, please? You just step forward and state your name and address.
My name's Matt Brown. I am the owner of the property. And let me give you, just so you'll know what we're talking about here.
Give it to her, I can look on heels.
Okay. I thought there were six, I'm seven. Okay. When I purchased this property, it was a house. A gentleman was living there. He did a lot of work redoing it, but for him, it was a residence. When we got ready to sell it, well, let me back up just a minute. We put basically a studio in there for one reason, and that was because of internet. I live in Lawrenceburg, actually live out in the country. We, my business requires a lot of internet speed, and I had a girl that worked there, and we rented that, and we bought that house. And basically, she did production work all day long. We did shoot some there on special occasions, something like a, a pop-up store. But as far as opened up nine to five normally, we didn't do it. So, you know, I, I did not know that, have any idea that this was zoned commercially until we started to sell it, and someone called my realtor and said, did you know it's zoned commercially? Well, no, we didn't. And, you know, I just don't see it being a commercial building. It's a, you know, it's a national register home. There's no parking in front of it. There, when we bought it, there was one parking space, and one day, the space got gone, and a sign got put up, said, no parking. So this house is a hundred, let's say eighteen forty-seven, a great old structure, it's built in the manner of Philadelphia townhouse. And, and basically, it's a two-room house, I mean, a four-room house, two up and two down, which is a living room and a dining room downstairs. Years later, they kicked off a kitchen off the back porch and a bathroom, and then two bedrooms upstairs. It's, I can't think of a lot of businesses that would go there. And I've noticed that Mount Pleasant has an abundance of commercial buildings empty at this point. Now, on the other hand, our prospective owner has plans to renovate the house and live there, and make it a showplace. I've, you know, I've talked to him a little bit about what they're going to do, and it's pretty expensive to keep a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty-year-old house up, and you have to have a lot of loving care along the way. And I do not think that, you know, a commercial property would work there. That's pretty much, pretty much what I have to say, you know, I, like I said, I had no idea because it was zoned. When, Mayor White, when was this, you said that you took-
I'm not, I'm not Mayor White.
Where is he?
No, this is the planning commission.
None of these names match.
Okay, well, I, I thought you- You looked a little bit different. Okay, all right, well, anyway, that's, that's where we are right now. I, I thought we were going with the whole group tonight, but-
It'll probably wind up there.
Well.
It has to either way.
Yeah, either way, it has, it has to wind up there.
So Robert, what was this zone before it went to Neighborhood Commercial?
It balled. It balled, so we, we didn't change any zoning, so-
Yeah.
Just so the board's aware.
Just a different name.
Different name, in essence, is what it was. We had C one, C two, and C three in our old zone. So none of the zoning on that strip changed. So it's likely, without looking back at the map, it's likely the property in question was Zone C two, which was almost the same as Neighborhood Commercial. If you look at the bulk regulations and standards that applied to that zone in our old zone. So Mr. Brown might not have had knowledge of that, but the zoning particular didn't change to that lot. It changed the name, and I think the bulk regulations may, may have been tweaked. But other than that, the zoning stayed the same, in essence.
And so if he bought it and it was residential, it was a non-conforming use at the time?
That's correct, and I don't know when Mr. Brown purchased the property, because our zoning has changed over the years, you know, as all zoning does. But if he bought it under the guise of a commercial property, not knowing that it was commercial property and somebody was living there, then it was purchased as a non-conforming property at that time. However, nine times out of ten, a realtor or during the sale of property, you're not going to be, nobody's going to be aware of that. But I just want to make the board aware that the zoning wasn't changed, the zoning designation, other than the label of that zone, and maybe the bulk standards were tweaked just a little bit. But the zoning resembles the same title lot that you see in our current zone for that particular structure. Now, if it had been used as a residence, all right, if you look at the structures behind that I mentioned earlier in my comments, that are non-conforming structures, they've always been zoned commercial. They probably failed within the C two, under our old zoning. And then when it got, when our new zoning got updated, CDT. So they are non-conforming uses, but they're still being used as residence, so. Until that use changes, then a lot of, a lot of people, especially ones not directly involved with it, don't know that there's a commercial application or commercial zone that not be their structure, it not be situ, their structure not be situated in, so. But it didn't-
And we looked at Tennessee database, it says single, single-family dwelling.
It does, and they identify that, and it's very confusing to the public. Tax record has nothing to do with zoning.
Right.
And I explained it to a lot of people, it is very confusing. I don't, I, I don't know that you can ever eliminate that problem because that not only exists here, but that's on any property that's agency. Tax record identifies the use currently. Whereas a zoning is applicable to, you know, bulk standards and that area that surrounds that property. And in my history of doing this, Mr. Brown, they've never coincided before, never. It's just always the use that's applied.
Okay.
And I've been in there, we've had photo, I've had my kids photo shoots in there, I love the place. But the, the problem is, is that, you know, we had another house, two doors down from me, was with the same issue. And because of the historical zone, and because of it being this, then, you know, it's like you, what is a spot? Spot zoning, which we would also get in trouble for.
Well, that particular house, the, was, I think, at the beginning was a hat shop. And I think the problem with that was that there was, there was maybe a historical alley, or you had to have egress to the other property from that property. So that's, I think that's what, what changed that, what kept that from going anyway.
Let me clarify something about spot zoning before y'all deliberate any further. So when we talk about spot zoning, that's exactly what it sounds like, where you have a property that zoned one thing, where you pick out one property and you zone it something different than all the ones around it.
Right.
This one has, are they non-conforming all the way around, or are there-
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
No, so, so as in my explanation earlier in the comments, you do have CDT, you have neighborhood commercial, but then you have non-conforming uses residential, but behind all of that, you do have our identified zone of Mobile Home Park that is behind that. So you do have a residential use that is situated block, block away, I guess, a block away from the property.
But the neighboring properties are zoned what?
Residential.
No, they're not confor-
They're not non-conforming, so they all fall within line of the-
But if someone moves out and try to sell them, they will be-
They are.
Commercial, yeah. It's, it's because they were already there when it was rezoned, but if someone moves out of them and try to sell it, it's going to become commercial.
So we're going to fix that. We got, we got to fix that area somehow where we're not coming back to those all the time.
The downtown area is so, it's so hard to fix, and that's for not, not only- And that's for not, not only for Mount Pleasant, but it's so hard to fix because you do have, a lot of your zoning bleeds over into the other, especially when it comes to neighborhood commercial and your residential, R3 specifically speaking to that. Because in the title blocks, they do, one speaks specifically disturbing the public as a business, the other speaks specifically to being close to and adjacent to downtown commercial area to support the business. But that's in any zoning context that I've ever viewed because the downtown is just, it's like a, it's, it's almost, it's so hard to, I, I guess.
Same problems in Columbia.
You do, it's just so hard to-
More than one youth can fit the land use plan.
Sure. There's several properties in Columbia I could think of right now that have gone back and forth, and how do they do that? And that's, that's what we need to be able to do because there's nothing wrong with somebody putting a coffee shop in one of these. And if they can't make that work and sell it for somebody to live in it, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
But our zoning doesn't allow for that the way it's on.
Flexibility.
Yeah, flexibility, without coming in here every time, having to try to make a tough decision for one person's property versus somebody else's.
I, I totally agree. I think every request submitted to the board is different in some respect. And right now, that's really all the board has to go on, is consistency in, in what y'all do as an authoritative board and also the circumstances involved in each case. And I guess that's where it makes it hard to make, you know, justify a decision for this board. I appreciate what y'all do and sitting up there and having to make these decisions, but.
I got some, anyone else here to speak on this matter? Would please come forward and state your name and address, please?
My name's Jim Brown. I'm the potential buyer. Live in College Grove. And we're going to move to Mount Pleasant and retire, make this our last home, so to speak. We have no intentions of Airbnb or tearing the home down or anything like that whatsoever, or moving in it, fixing it up and flipping it, none of that stuff. We want to move away from our area because the growth-
Right.
-is just unreal. And we've been there all of our lives. The home that we're going to sell is over 30 years old. And so, we're not a hoppers, and we just want to put it back the way it was. We want to do a slight addition to the back so we'll have a master bedroom. And, you know, hopefully have our grandchildren over on Sunday. And that's it.
That's how I ended up down here, I get it.
Yeah, we do, we do.
We both, we both loved Franklin 25 years ago.
Yeah.
And we see Mount Pleasant that way now. Hopefully, moving here now and getting involved with people like you guys, we can keep Mount Pleasant, not necessarily behind the growth, but help it evolve in ways that it should instead of the ways that Franklin has done.
I realize that I worked up there 22 years.
Yeah, I've had this business there 39 years.
Yeah.
And it's a great place to work.
Yeah.
Love, love, love the income there.
Mm-hmm.
But not a place to live anymore, just not. So, that's our intentions, if that helps anything. I'll have to say.
All right, very good, thank you. That's all I had on there. Any further discussion from the board? Not I entertain a motion on this.
Also, just so the board's aware, all notifications were sent out as typical fashion. To surround property owners with internal pick radius, copy of the lawyers here. I have not heard, my office-
No one's here to speak on that tonight, I only had two to sign up.
I have not heard from anybody except for Mr. Sprouts, I believe.
He spoke last time.
He spoke last time.
But he came to my office in this particular case, and all I have is our conversation. He wasn't going to be present tonight, but he did wish me to pass it on to the board. But it makes a difference or not because he's not present to justify what I'm saying, but he wanted me to pass it on to the board. He didn't have an issue with this particular property. So, that's, that's the only person I've had approach me in regards to this, in the book.
Thank you.
You don't have to make a motion right away, you can go talk about it more before you do that, if you need to.
I don't, I don't see where it matters either way it's zoned. The only thing, like Cory, I just want to make sure on the historic side of it, that we're making the right decision on that.
And it may not be covered if we zone.
Do you need that answer before you make a vote, or before you vote? I mean.
I'm probably going to be a no anyway until we, until we address the whole, the whole area as such. So, I mean, I don't really need anything else, I just hadn't made the motion yet. But that's, I'm not opposed to it going either way, but we need to, need to fix it in that area. Where we can have little shops or little boutiques and people in the next door and make, make it a walking community.
Mr. Hager?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you for joining us, I know you've been present. I know you've heard the discussion as well. Do you know anything specifically in regards to the historic question that came up?
Sure, yeah. And typically, the historic overlays, the historic zoning, they regulate the structures and maintenance of the structures and expansion of historic structures or districts. So, they do not have an impact on the use of the building that's governed by the underlying zoning. So, historic zoning overlays are really more of a design overlay that, that seek to maintain historic aspects of the architecture and, and things in those lines. We can double check that if there's a question about that. But I think, I think this discussion is really good. The commercial neighborhood zoning district can, it could, if, if the boards and commissioners felt it was appropriate, it could include residential uses along with those kind of local business uses that are permitted currently. That's another option that you might want to consider. Going from a CN to a strict R3 that would prohibit commercial uses might be a pretty big swing. But it sounds like that's the best option that this particular owner has at the moment. So, maybe, maybe we can work with Robert and Cory to come up with some alternative options that meet their needs and their, their future intent, but also kind of protect what that section of Main Street is currently and what you hope it becomes in the future. That's just another way to look at it, I think. But again, if additional questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
I, I just want to say, you know, I just, I hate this decision because I already love these people right here, just listening to them talk, and, and I love this house. And, but I just feel like we just denied someone this very thing. I mean, I just struggle with that part of it is we, somebody just asked us to do this two doors down, and we said no. And so, that's where my struggle is, just saying.
Like John, it's definitely got to be worked on.
It's got to be worked on. As more people move here, as we bring in new businesses, as people want to escape where they're from, we don't want to make this the same way that-
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want to get the word out, but, you know.
He's on the list.
Yeah.
Can I interject real quick? I, I know you brought up a good point, and I know that probably everyone of the commissioners struggle with this, is consistency, and especially in rezoning. So, typically, when it's brought before the board, the uses are not brought. Well, they're not considered, not supposed to be given consideration. I've had this conversation with our attorney as well. Typically, what happens in these cases is the use is discussed as well, which is fine. I think personally, the board should consider the use, especially from one zone to another. I don't know if that has any legal basis, maybe Cory can speak to that. But, but the use is generally talked about at length. Any rezon that we've ever had, even though it's not a part of the rezon request, is typically brought up in the discussion. I say that to say this, I restate, when a rezon request is brought before this board, almost every time, you're going to have a different set of circumstances regarding-
Right.
-whatever the pretended use or the proposed use may be, because that's typically discussed. So, you know, if that gives you any, if that relieves any tension in reference to a decision that's made on each rezon, you know, those circumstances are always different.
Well, and that makes it even harder because, like, if somebody, if, if it wasn't that I knew these cute people and this great, you know, I, I wouldn't want it to be R3 identity.
And if, if the circumstances change, you rezoned it.
I know, I know.
Happens, and that's what we, you know, because I was for the other people rezoning. And I mean, but, you know, because of the location and that, then I would be a no vote right now too, I'm sorry.
I want to hear what he has to say.
And I do like them. I do like you bear with it.
I have, after listening to this gentleman speaking, TV guy here, Mr. Will Hager. It sounds like there possibly could be a way to leave this as it is and us obtain exactly what we're wanting to do. Is that a possibility? Based upon what he just said, we could go in and do our small addition off the back with regulations, but not have to do it commercially because the rest of the house is not commercial. Not got sprinkler systems, it's not got wheelchair ramps, it's not got handicap bathrooms, all of that stuff in it. Obviously, we wouldn't want to do that, at least not yet. But is there a possibility we could leave the zoning as it is and do our addition as residence? I would be fine with that because that's not going to make a really big difference except for when it comes to pay taxes, is the only thing that I know. I don't think they're-
Then you may put a business in the front and-
No, no business.
No, they go on the historical.
No, we want to keep it just like it is, except-
Historical part.
I mean, we've got plans of taking all the siding off the front and re-putting brand new siding on it, not just painting over it, we want to do it right.
There's a zone, there's a zone issue.
I think what Will's talking about, and he can correct me if I'm misunderstanding, but instead of rezoning this particular property, we might redefine the parameters of this zone.
Commercial.
Or create a different zone that would allow for more than just commercial because we don't want to prohibit, like, if we, if y'all rezon this to residential, and then they sell it and the next person wants to put it in a commercial, they have to come to the same thing again. But I think what Will is suggesting is like a bigger picture. Instead of doing property by property like has happened in the past couple months, maybe trying to redefine the parameters of the zone itself to allow for more uses that are conducive to what y'all want to see in this area.
That's, yeah, that's all I've been asking for.
Yeah.
Basically, it's a heavy win-win situation for both sides.
That's what Will, that's what you're saying.
And you may have a coffee shop next door to you. I mean, it just may, you know, or something like that, or behind you, or your dress shop.
But that's a process that would take months.
Take months.
Yeah. And you're, and you, you're not going to go into that.
Now, our whole situation is, is we're trying to outrun the weather.
Right.
Literally, we have people lined up, we're supposed to close tomorrow and have people lined up next week to start working. And it's kind of hard for us to do that. We've submitted all the plans and everything, Robert, and, and it's like we're hinged on this right here, whether to even close or can we move into the same and live as people or we've got to live as a business. And that's, we have to live as a business, we're not going to be able to afford to do it. It's going to be a huge difference in, in, you know, putting a hundred or $200,000 into this home to renovate it versus have to put sprinkler systems and everything else to commercialize. That's just not what we want to do.
I understand what Cory and Will are talking about, it's changing the zoning ordinance, it's just going to be at the very minimum of a 90-day-
To fit the whole perimeter.
Very minimum of 90 days.
And that, and that way-
That's actually being conservative, I think.
Yeah.
It doesn't happen quickly.
Right.
And, and that way, it protects not only the, the value of where it is now, it protects the, the home itself not to be destroyed and other things built.
My concern for you, though, is that can't happen quickly. And you sound like you're, like you said, you're, it won't, if it shouldn't happen, but you're talking about closing tomorrow.
But just to be clear, nothing, what, even if they say that they want to rezon this property to residential?
Oh, I understand.
Okay, that's a recommendation, and then we've got two more months before that, or one and a half more months.
But if it don't get, if it don't get past this, then, you know, I'm back to the drawing board.
Okay.
You know, of course, we have to do, we have to do notification that we're planning on rezoning that area.
Right, it would be, hopefully, a smaller area than what y'all did in 2018. But, I mean, you don't want to make any snap judgments, we learned that, so.
This would still need two votes by the commission before you would even go back to looking at your zoning.
But I do think that's a very good proposal, though, for this area because I, y'all are struggling with what you want these properties to be. And like Robert said, each property is different, but you still have to follow the same rules, you know? So, you have to apply the specific circumstances to these same factors over and over again. So, y'all are free to do that, and I think you can make a decision either way. And you can make a decision, or you cannot make a decision today, and then try to explore the option of looking at the zone in a bigger, in a bigger picture way, if that's what you're wanting to do, but.
Hey, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
I was trying, if, since I own the property, if I moved in, would, moved in and just live there, is that okay?
So, when you moved, when you turned the property to, started using it as commercial, and then it became, it was non-conforming at that point, right? When he was using it?
I have no idea how often.
No, it was, it was zoned for commercial when you bought it. But you used it as commercial, which was conforming to the actual use.
Right.
So, the people beside you, for instance, the ones that have been their non-conforming residential uses, they have consistently used it as residential the whole time. So, even though their properties are zoned for commercial, they are grandfathered in as a non-conforming use. So, it's a six-month time period.
If a person was living there.
Right, but then for a six-month period, it was used for something else, and so that kills that-
It was non-conforming too.
Yeah, it was non-conforming at that time.
It's confusing, granted that.
It definitely needs to be worked on.
I'm sorry to do it, but I'm going to jump out there and make a motion that we deny the rezoning request.
I have a motion.
Give it a second.
I have a second. We want to do a roll call on this, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, to deny it.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Vote as unanimous for denial of the rezoning, please.
Number seven is annexation request.
There are none, Chairman.
Number eight, site plan request, I'll leave this to you.
Yes, sir. You have on the agenda before you PC 10, 12, 21, SP 1, owner Catherine McDaniel. She's not present tonight at the meeting. Has submitted a site plan review request for property located 101 South- Has submitted a site plan review request for property located at 101 South Main Street. Proposing to add a second story addition to the existing single story building. The renovation will accommodate the second story and will include a new side of first floor renovations to support the addition of the second story. This is twofold tonight, it's brought before the planning commission as a site plan and a design review. You have two sets of plans, one being architectural plans, the other being the site plan. And I hope y'all have had the opportunity to look at both of those. The comments in regards to this particular agenda item after review. Site plan has been submitted for design review, the site plan is for renovation to 101 South Main Street, which includes extensive interior renovation in the first floor for retail uses and addition of second story which accommodate a single residential unit. Retail component is accessible from the front side facing Main Street while the residential unit will be accessible from the rear of the building. Staff comments as per section 4.6 C2A. Site plan and designer review authority and execution, the plan presented does not require submission of the site plan, but does require compliance of the design review criteria based on modifications to the SAT, totaling twenty percent of the appraised value of the structure. SAT compliance with performance criteria for the CDT Downtown Commercial Base Zone District. And then 8.4 it is in the Historic Overlay District as well. Section 11.2 AD, existing sites must meet parking requirements for additions totaling more than twenty-five percent of the existing structures. 11-2A, 3-4, change in land use in intensity of use, existing sites with a change in use, i.e. addition of residential, residential units must meet parking requirements. 11.2D2A and B, mixed use developments which use the same parking facilities but at different times of day may share parking facilities. This provision does, does require approval of the planning department. Typically, the parking arrangement for this type of use times have been found to be residentially utilized at nights and on weekends. Perez Parking for Retail is normally generated during business hours on weekdays. 11-2J, Table 8, page 1111. Dwelling in CDT Commercial Downtown, above ground floor is 1.5 per two bedroom unit for parking requirement. 13.4A, structural additions to non-conforming buildings are expressly permitted. The degree of non-conformity of the building may not be increased. And I ask the planning commission to give consideration to following criteria when reviewing this specific project. And that is being historic and or architectural value present structure, relationship with exterior architectural features of such structures to the rest of the structure of the surrounding area, the general compatibility of exterior design, arrangement, texture, and any other factor including aesthetics which is deemed to be pertinent. I go further, if approved, staff recommends the confirmation and condition of the original parapet wall on the building be reviewed by staff once the final signing is removed. If the original parapet exists, then there might need to be some field conversation that takes place in relation to if the plan needs to change at that point in relation to the secondary elevation. This was presented to the historic commission as well. I've included the ruling from the historic board that you have in your packet right there. I hope that was enough information, I won't cover that in verbatim through the board. There were several things that were brought up during the discussion that was before the historic board. And the ruling was in favor. The building that you have right, right now is non-conforming to historic nature, not the zone. But the architecture of the secondary elevation speaks for itself, as you can see in the plans. The engineer architect of record are present and they welcome any questions, Mr. and Ms. Newton. In regards to this project, they would gladly answer any architectural questions that you may have. The site plan in regards to the parking, I'll speak a little specifically to that if you don't mind. We had not really, well, an issue yet presented itself. But we have, once again, in our downtown area, we have public parking available in our zoning text. Any use, whether it's in the downtown area or out at Cherry Glen, is required to allocate a certain number of parking based off requirements square footage of the building, the structure and the type of use and the traffic that are generated. That's the thing is on the 165. We don't have any specific guidelines for our public parking as far as the city enforcing any regulations there, it's not monitored, it's not metered, it's not placed. So that being said, they have included parking as you see on the site plan. And the residential required spot, because it has to be on the same property or within three hundred feet, I believe, of the residential area. In other words, you want the residents to have easy access to their residence is shown in the back parking lot as a reserved spot. Along with, I think there's three or three spots additionally and then four shown on the street. We cannot regulate nor monitor at this time any non-leash spaces. But, and Ms. Jones can speak to this as well, because she's been working on the parking arrangement, her and the city manager. So I'll defer to her with any questions concerning the parking. Right now, the way it's situated, they have shown the site plan that they can meet allocated parking just based on the public park and the street park that's available. And they can meet the residential parking requirements by having a space allocated in the back. How that comes about is through, and I'll let Cory speak to that.
So, this is something we've, we've talked about a lot over the past month or so internally, but there is a city ordinance already in place that allows the city manager to enter into a lease for one parking spot per person in public parking at ten dollars a month. So, we have proposed that we have Kate entered into a lease with the property owner for the one required residential parking and that that would satisfy the zoning requirement for the residential. So the allocated parking for the non, for the commercial property, it's shown on the plat as available, but it's not theirs. So, it's, anybody can park there. Yeah, it's public parking, so it's available for them, but it's not there's no exclusive use for that property for this business. Also, I'll put my plug in when y'all are looking at this zoning ordinance again, this will be one of the things that we're asking you to consider, how are we gonna do for parking requirements or things like that for these types of districts? But I think that we have satisfied the residential requirement with the lease that I will draft and Kate will will just tell you that Kate would be the one to sign that and the others allocated.
Did he mark and designated off, right?
Yes.
You understand it's not on the street.
Yeah, I know it's not on the street because the entrance to the apartment would be in the back. But I'm saying what a back parking lot is, if I'm saying, but it will be designated for that apartment.
Yes, it will be designated some way, so this will be really the first one that we've done like this, so we're
Robert started by saying we done policed it, so.
Yeah.
Somebody's been parking spot one and it's that spot.
They're gonna have to call, they're gonna have to call.
Yeah.
A few people that's happened to Columbia have spots.
Yeah.
Something that we need to work on and Columbia has struggled with it for years and years.
This will be a marked spot.
Filled up everywhere, parking is an issue.
There'll be a marked spot, the owner will be the one, I believe, to mark it.
That's per ordinance.
Per the ordinance, so.
Agreed, agreed.
That was one thing we discussed in the historical.
They have to mark it, they have to identify.
We weren't sure exactly how that was gonna work.
It's, we can send y'all the, the ordinance that only like three paragraphs long, but it explains.
Did I include this with y'all?
Okay.
Did I include it in your packet?
It's old too. Ten dollars a month.
This is the ordinance and if y'all
Remember years and years ago, we did that, yeah. It used to be a question all around town, who, why this is not a parking place.
I kind of know how it works in Columbia because I know some people that have them and that have been blocked in and all that good stuff.
And then if you have all kinds of people that need them, then also there's a parking spot.
Right.
We've struggled with it, like, that's why we've talked about it so much.
Any further discussion from the board here?
It, when it came before the historic board, the parking was one of the things that we wasn't sure about. But as far as the design and the colors and the material was passed at the historic board because it was all satisfactory to what our requirements, what the historic board requirements are.
It did meet the standards and I also included in your packet to apply from the engineer to the historic comments. Addressed everything that we asked them in the store. There was really no comments requiring response in regards to the site. But architecturally, they addressed the comments that by addressing them already in this, unless the planning commission sees that architecturally there's something deficient there that needs to be addressed. I think they did, they did a good job in presenting the case to the historic commission. Once again, they're present tonight, welcome any questions that y'all have.
Board have any questions from the people representing site plan?
As long as staff's comfortable with where we're at.
Same way, not an entertaining motion.
Make a motion we approve PC 101, 221, site plan request.
I have a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion cares? Good luck. Yeah, it's all
It's all been true, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, really. That'll look good. Other business?
Yes, Chairman.
It is, I forgot it, Robert, I've been putting up my paperwork here.
We do have other business discussed with the board.
Seen Rodney looking at his wife.
We do have other business, last month, the board had presented to them by a who was representative of the commission at that time, just a citizen. Mr. Davis presented to the board in essence, the composition of our planning commission and wanted this commission to consider revisiting that in relation to his specific request, which was to in essence, only allow residents of Mount Pleasant to be members on this board. So, tonight, it, it wasn't on the agenda, but I was supposed to, Ms. Jones was there and she said it was perfectly fine to add as other business. I'm gonna ask, has the board given any consideration to that? Do y'all want to revisit our composition of the planning commission? And if so, that needs to be officially added to the agenda as a discussion item, I think, and
We have to have a certain notice.
Yeah, and it's only on the agenda again because I think Chairman said we'll bring it back next month in case anybody wants to.
That's right, so.
If we had to make sure it was back on for discussion.
I just, you know, since last month, I know a lot that's going on, but that was one of the things that I wanted to bring back to the board's attention. But that's still out there, if y'all, whether you do or you don't want to revisit the bylaws, specifically speaking to the composition, just ask that if you could make it known tonight and that way I kind of know as staff what, what direction we need to go. If you're comfortable with it or if y'all want to revisit.
I personally don't see any reason to.
I know, it's like we talked, that's, that's part of the authority, if you start it with one board or we're gonna start it with all of them, so.
So the general consensus, I didn't have that for a vote at Adam. So just go with general consensus and note in the minutes.
I say it dies here.
Does anybody wants it to be brought back up?
Is anybody needed brought back up?
We really just add it as a discussion item, continue discussion, so we can continue to do that.
It can be brought back up again, yeah.
But we just don't want to.
Me and John think you should eliminate people that live on the flats.
Can you exclude our street?
We don't need any type of vote or motion on it, do we?
Let's go ahead and vote.
I entertain a motion that on this issue that we're discussing from the previous meeting.
How would that sound?
You're, you're voting to make no changes.
I make a motion we don't make any changes as to how the board is appointed.
I have a second?
Sure do, I'll second it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
We had to abstain? Did you abstain? Okay, gotcha.
Thank you very much, and that was all.
Board staff comment?
No, sir.
We're done.
Got one board comment, I'd just like to reiterate, we need to fix this problem.
Yeah, it is, you know, and these people, these people are really sincere of what they want to do. Yeah, they are.
You know, knowing how you guys work, what's the best way to do that is, I know in the past when you had specific issues like that, you have a study session prior to your regular meeting, so you have time to discuss it if there's something you want to get on right away, I mean.
That's fine, whatever we need to do, but just, I'm like John, it definitely needs to be worked on.
Needs to be worked on ASAP.
Yeah.
So, Will, we can get some recommendations and maybe, maybe in the near future we'll have a meeting that starts before six, so you have time to
We don't want to deter people from coming in here and
And make it
Remind me if they make a change, if they make a change, it's approved at this level, it still goes to the commission for
Oh, I understand, I understand.
But we gotta address it.
Yeah, it has to start here to go, yeah.
But we need probably direction that that's what y'all are wanting to do so we can
Maybe we'll make some suggestions.
Okay, so we can bring it back.
Get it to you guys and you can not reply all, but reply individually saying, I like this, I don't like this, you know.
That'll work. Who, did you copy that?
Yeah, we can, we can get together, I'll work with Robert to address some language and, and try to capture what the concerns are. I mean, these really are some pretty specific instances where this is likely to happen. But we can, we can try to approach that through vision of that district. If that's the best or if you think it needs to be its own new district, you do it that way, but Robert, not
That work for you?
Yes, ma'am.
And we need, and, and we need to make sure about the historic board because I know at one point it will stand that if it was residential, we did not, we could not actually we should stop them from changing the structure. But that's it, that's it. But you know, any, any other thing, it wasn't historical, we didn't have anything to say in it. So we also need to revisit that to make sure because I don't want to do it once it's gone, it's gone.
I think historic, historic modification, exterior modifications regards to residential or commercial, it's my opinion, and I know Ms. Jones is gonna look into that, but irregardless of the use, if it's in the historic district, it's an historic structure, whether non-conforming or conforming, any modification to the exterior of that structure falls together. That's my understanding.
Unlike you though, I remember
I remember also when we had that meeting, when that lady was here that was telling us that, that, you know, from the way she explained it, we would not have any
Initially, it was only commercial.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any, any say so over the residential.
So we can be
Yeah, I mean, I, so
I know one thing, just more space with a lot of tough tasks in the last few months and I'm sure we got more coming.
Struggle, struggle.
We, we definitely, as John and Jennifer said, we have definitely got to do something because I don't like it no more than they do sitting up here deterring people from coming into this town and growing.
Well, I mean, I don't like it anymore, you know, saying that they can't
You know, they're gonna do it, right?
But, if, I'm still right back to the same thing, I mean, you know, life happens and what if they decide, well, okay, we're gonna move and sell this, now they can, you know, it's no longer
The R3.
Right, and we can't change it back.
That's right, once it changes.
And if I'm not mistaken, the historic board, we're gonna need to check on that because I thought that lady told us that we didn't have any And if I'm not mistaken, the historical board, we're gonna need to check on that, because I thought that lady told us that we didn't have any, because we was talking about when it spread it out to the, to the houses. We can't, your house won't be classified as being historical in that community, but you can do what you want to with it. Now, I, I'm.
You know, we, we, we said this when we went in and went to change and all this.
Yes.
That we would run, and, and it's, it's coming sooner than we thought it would.
Yeah.
That this would happen.
Well, not only did we make changes, all of a sudden the growth is shit.
Oh, I'm understanding, and, and, and we're, we're sitting here with our hands tied and.
But surely there's never a time that like I have to come to you and tell, or the historical board and say, well, can I paint my house's color?
Absolutely, Columbia works that way.
Yeah, yes it is.
We don't have that here, but that is.
Well, we have, we don't, we don't have colors per se, but we got a. We, we, we gotta basically, God, God, I have the colors too. That's why the colors that was in that apartment building went in brown.
Yeah.
You can't come in here and paint your house pink on the main street.
Yeah, you can. He can move into it as a commercial.
And live in it, right?
No.
No.
You can't?
With upstairs?
Upstairs only applies to upstairs residential in the CDT zone, nothing other than commercial.
So what's, what's the guy up here in the middle of town that's got the apartment above the building?
CDT. CDT. Uh, now, there, in our zoning ordinance, there is a accessory apartment to a business.
Now, what are you talking about? Where in town?
On the left, the guy, there used to be an apartment above the building, like there next to the courthouse. When our apartment above that.
It was an over-dill pizza place, and now it's an Airbnb.
Well, I think Ed, didn't Ed Brennan used to live upstairs in this building?
There's a, there's a apartment between Halo Hall and the police station.
Yeah.
In the back of the white building.
Oh, he fired.
Accessory business apartment would apply in zoning ordinance, if somebody had a commercial property and they wanted to reside there. We have a, um, a use accessory business apartment. Now, certain things are applicable to that use.
And that's what I was suggesting to them when I said.
In other words, the owner has to reside there seventy-five percent of the time, can't rent it out, so and so. As long as that criteria is met, that use is allowed as accessory business apartment.
So, in his situation, did he not do that? So he could go and start.
But you gotta have a business.
You gotta have a business.
You still gotta have a business.
That's the criteria, you gotta have a business.
That's what I was suggesting to him, but you gotta have a big, some type of business.
He could gamble, we'll get it worked out and start on it anyway.
He wants, he wants that.
You had to do it during.
I did, I, I, do I have a motion for a journal?
I'll make a motion in a journal.
All the ones that say the twenty-ninth, but not this one that has. Right?
Uh.
Uh, oh.
Motion carries. You know, a lot of this stuff, it keeps up, we're just gonna have to go to the center of the commission. You know, let them do all this.
Historical in his.
I don't care where it's historical.